And Commissioner Rice will open up with invocation, Lee's in the class.
Good Lord, Father, we thank you for this beautiful community in which we live. And we thank you for the opportunity we have tonight to come together and share our thoughts and ideas about what is good and right for the future of our community. Grant us the wisdom to fairly deal with all that's been put before us tonight. We ask for your guidance, in your name we pray. Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner. The planning commission considers application for site plans and village preservation permits. In addition, the PC considers request for rezonance, conditional and special use permits, ordinance amendments. The planning commission makes final decision on site plans and village preservation permits and makes recommendations to the board commissioners on rezonance, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. Our planning commission allows public comments for site plans and village preservation permits. The commission holds public hearings for rezonance, conditional and special use permits and ordinance amendments. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinances and other applicable regulations in conform to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is responsibility of the applicant to make presentations of requests and to address any conditions or factual findings for which they do not agree. Public hearings and public comments will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposed side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments will be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal. Chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate the speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. First item of business is to approve the minutes of the regular meetings held January 21st, 2020, subject to any necessary corrections.
Mr. Chair, I saw what the meeting's due for wasn't necessary corrections that she did.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Rag, Commissioner Ragville, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. You announce. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We defer the new business item having to do with envision Glen update.
Want to get into that now? So that's...
Well, I just thought we would make any change at the beginning of the meeting.
All right. Second. For a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I don't know how, whether anybody besides me had a chance to look at the information Stephanie provided, but I went to the work session last Tuesday, and so I had the benefit of hearing the report that the consultant delivered. I find that the data that was provided as survey results don't coincide with that report in any way, shape, or form. They had a list of two pages' worth of items that they said were going to be dropped from the study because the survey that was given to the commissioners said that they didn't think it should be further examined. There's only one item in the survey in which the majority of the commissioners said it should not be examined any further, and that item is the, unfortunately, it's the item that said that the planning commission bylaws should be revisited to expand the review of subdivision plans and so on and so on. My point being that out of 50, 49 questions, there was only one question that should not have, according to the vote of the commissioners, should have been taken off the table, and yet a report from the consultant had two pages' worth of items that they said were going to be taken off the table. So I don't think the results of the survey correlate with their presentation at all.
Mr. Lee, do you want to elaborate on that?
Sure. Yes, Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager, yes, that is a very good question, and that is part of the reason for why we are requesting it to be deferred until March. We want to take another look at the survey results and just make sure that all parties, you know, fully understood the survey and the results, and make sure that the results reflect truly what the answers to the survey were. So we're going to take another look at all that and bring that back before the Board of Commissioners, and just make sure that all the concerns from, particularly the islanders and everyone, are reflected in that.
We know when that's going in front of the commission again?
I do not have a date yet. We'll be visiting with them to determine the best venue and date for that. So we'll let you know when that comes back up before them.
One other just comment. You know, we've theoretically been told by the consultant and by the Community Development Department that we are, that we, the two planning commissions are supposed to be the steering committee for this activity. We're not steering anything. Everything we're getting, we're getting after everything is done. We didn't know they were going to do a survey with the commissioners. We don't know what the questions on the survey were. We aren't aware of what's going. We're not driving the boat, or piloting the boat, or whatever the right cliche is. Just seems to me there's a disconnect here. If we're going to be a steering committee, we need to be in front of this and not behind it, and we're not.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Ragville, we can make that point to the Board of Commissioners and see if we can get their input on that.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, ready to vote? All in favor? Raise your hand.
Mr. Motion?
Duncan made it, and Torres, second.
Thank you.
All right. Village Preservation, VP 4270, 415 Butler Avenue. Consider design review approval of a remodel of an existing porch and addition of new wall and columns at the single-family dwelling unit located 415 Butler Avenue, St. Simon's Island. Parcel number 04-08032. Property is on Village Residential and Island Preservation Design Review District. Kevin J. Chase, John J. Chase Trust, owner and now. Ms. Lee?
Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager, this is VP 4270, 415 Butler Avenue. This is the property located here where the star is located, so it's, the address is Butler Avenue, but it is at the intersection of Muse Circle and then Georgia Street, which really continues to Grove Lane, really adjacent to this residence. And the existing residence is staying on the property. It's really just a remodel to a portion of the residence where the porch is located. So they do have an existing screen porch and an awning that's non-structural. They do plan to take that down and replace it with a new screen porch. There's also a perimeter wall that was damaged by a tree, and they do plan to replace that with a new structural wall, as well as columns, to support the new porch design. And a portion of the house that is the subject of the remodel is what faces Grove Lane slash Georgia Street. So this is the front facade of the property. This is standing on Butler looking towards the property. And then this is standing on Butler near the corner of Grove Lane, looking towards the property, and the arrow is pointing to where the awning and porch is located that will be removed and replaced. And just a little closer in view, you can see the perimeter, the perimeter wall really kind of covers the screen porch, and an awning just out above it. So these are the elevations of what is going to be the proposed new porch. So there is a design change, so the perimeter wall will be lower, and then they'll have a different design with the arches for the screen porch. This is just a plan view of it. And then there's a few slides here that show the plans for the new screen porch.
That's nice. Inside the cloche.
Yeah. These are your standards of evaluation under the village preservation, and these are your potential actions, and these are your possible motions to approve the application, VP 4270, move to approve with modifications, defer, or deny. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of staff? Is the applicant here?
Kevin Chase here.
Would you like to come up and make any comments? You don't have to, but...
No, not really. Happy to answer any questions, though.
Okay, all right. Well, they do allow comments from the public, so we'll open that up now, and for anybody who would like to speak against this application, may go to the podium and identify yourself. Write that down. Anybody would like to speak for it? Mr. Smith?
Do I need to pull this out, Mr. Chairman? We're not...
No, you're fine, like that.
Okay. I'm Julian Smith, I live on the island. In this case, this particular application is appropriate to its immediate neighborhood in terms of mass and scale. This is the more expensive part of the village because it's near the ocean, so, and these houses tend to be privately owned and occupied, or at least they were until recently. So, yes, this is quite appropriate, and I say this because I'm going to speak in opposition to the next application. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak in favor? All right, see none? Commissioners, maintain the motion?
Just have a question. Are you planning to change the color?
No, same color.
I have a comment.
All right, go ahead.
I just want, I want to say I appreciate the depth of the application and the information that you're giving. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move we approve VP 4270.
Commissioner Ragville, motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Duncan, second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. You announce. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations. Would it be disrespectful if I...
No, we'd all like to go with you.
Thank you all very much. Good night.
VP 4265, 516 Oak Street. Consider design review approval of a new single-family dwelling unit at 516 Oak Street, St. Simon's Island. Parcel number 04-15082. Property is on Village Residential and Island Preservation Design Review District. Kevin Higgins, agent for Monty M. and Elizabeth and Dermot Owens. Ms. Lee?
Thank you. VP 4265, 516 Oak Street, and this is a new single-family residence. So this is the property where the star is located, so the property is on Oak Street near the intersection of Demory Way. So they are requesting design review for the new single-family dwelling. There are three lots that are part of a minor subdivision, and I did email you some of the plats and surveys, as well as I put them in the presentation that I'll show you here in a minute. But this is Lot C of this minor plat is what the lot is that they're going to be developing the new, the new house on. There was a former residence that was on, it was total, it was merged as one parcel at one point in time, all three lots, and there was an existing older home that was demolished in 2018 that had come through the Islands Preservation, or I'm sorry, the IPC, for Islands Preservation Review. That was case number VP 3725, and so on April 17th of 2018, they were granted approval to demolish that house, and that house was primarily located on Lot B of the subdivision. This new house, like I said, is on Lot C. There are two 30-inch diameter breast tite oak trees that will be preserved on the property. There is a small tree they've indicated that's on the southwest side of the property that will be removed. I did look back, and also back in 2018, there were two laurel oaks that were on this property that had been removed prior to this application coming in. Our county arborist, Dr. Gardner, had reviewed those at that point in time and did determine that they, that they were, that they did need removal, and they were unhealthy, so the owner had removed the two laurel oaks back in 2018. So you may have seen those on the survey, but those are no longer on the property, but they did get approval from the county to be removed. So there's a few photos. This is a view from Oak Street looking into the property, so as you can see, the building site has been leveled and graded. And then this is standing on the property looking out towards Oak Street. And this is looking on the property, looking to, like, kind of the southwest. This is an adjacent, two adjacent single-family homes. And then this is looking on the property kind of through the trees that are on lots A and B, looking out towards Demory Way. So these are some of the plats that show how these lots had been created over the years. So the top plat is from 1950. This is the original Demory Oaks plat. And lots one and two, which are here at Oak Street and Demory Way, were what the subdivision was originally on. So it was lots one and two, and then lots one and two were then subdivided in 2004 through this minor plat subdivision, so they created A, B, and C through that. And then in 2018, they did do a survey of the property where they did move a lot line, but they do show the trees that are on the property, and this is the subject property right here. And these are the plans submitted by the applicant for the new single-family house. So they would come in off of Oak Street, and they are showing that this would be a stone driveway. And I know we did have a question about if that would be permeable or impermeable stone driveway, so if the applicant can address that when they come up. And just a plan view of the first level, second level, and this is elevations. This is the front elevation. This would be what would face Oak Street, the rear elevation, and they did provide color samples and material, I'm sorry, well, not really samples, but just photos of the materials and colors they do plan to use on the property. Additional left and right elevations. And then these are some photos that the applicants took of the property showing the trees and the trees proposed for preservation, and then there is one tree that they are proposing for removal, oops, on that south, southwest corner of the property, or side of the property. These are your standards. These are your actions, and these are your possible motions, and happy to answer any questions. And I know Kevin Higgins is here representing the applicants. Do you have any questions of him?
Commissioners?
I remember being involved in the tree ordinance, and I don't recall that this type of project requiring a tree plan. Is that correct? So all these trees are this excessive and as in another, and kind, that's right?
Now that, yeah, the, under village preservation, we do require the landscape plan, so we do ask for all, you know, trees, you know, any trees being preserved or added, so, but I think technically, I don't think village preservation really happens to the tree, per se.
Site plan is property of an acre or thing, right?
Right, because there's no site plan required, but we do have the landscape plan requirements, though.
My understanding, at one time, there was three lots, and it's been merged and turned into one.
Where were we around?
There was, so I'll show you these plats. So originally, there were two lots, so lots one and two in Demory Oaks, so it was these two lots right here. And then in 2004, those two lots were further subdivided into three lots, and they, you know, kind of reconfigured the lot lines. So now they, they have the three lots. So this was 2004 when they did that. And then in 2018, they still have the three lots, but what they did was they, they moved a lot line, so this lot line here, so actually Lot, Lot C became smaller. So Lot B became larger, and Lot C became smaller through that lot line shift. So, yeah, so that's actually, they, originally, they had a larger parcel where there was one house on it, but there were always, you know, from 2004 on, there were three lots underneath there.
Was it ever one lot of record?
From the original plat that I found, there were two lots of record that this subdivision now sits on.
And the reason they were allowed to do that is because it predated the ordinance, I think, right, the initial subdivision?
Right, so they, yeah, in 2004, they, they did this three-lot subdivision through our, through the expedited subdivision process, and at that point in time, we still allowed properties on St. Simon's that were under one acre to be further subdivided, and so that's how this occurred. Now today, if the same project came to us, they could only do this through the preliminary plat process. They would not be able to do an expedited subdivision because they don't have a full acre that they'd be starting with.
Any other questions with the staff? An applicant would like to come forward?
Good evening. I'm Kevin Higgins, I'm the architect and agent, so I'm filled up for any questions. A stone driveway is a permeable, would be a permeable driveway just because of the approximation to the existing trees that we are saving. Any questions that you have to answer, and I've asked that you approved the... Do you want questions? Do you want questions? Or do you want to...
You'll have a chance.
I think questions, questions from the commissioner first.
I don't have any.
I didn't see any site coverage calculation in the documents that we got. What is the site coverage on the property?
I could provide that. I don't have it written, but with the, with the permeable driveway, I've got it.
The driveway counts in site coverage, even if it's permeable.
Oh, okay.
I believe, does it not?
It's permeable now.
It's permeable, does not.
That's the whole point.
Typically, it isn't now.
Site coverage, same point.
Is that heated? Is that what they brought, what they brought us, as well? We found, yeah.
On the first floor.
The bonus room, is that a bedroom, or? Do I understand it is, what, five bedrooms?
Um, I'm not saying it's right, that's what it said.
Each bedroom has a bath.
Is the dotted line on drawing A12 intended to be the setback line? And you're drawing A12.
Yeah. The same one?
Yes, that's the setback line.
I don't see any dimensions. Does it meet, is it within the setback line?
Yes, there is. Seven feet, seven feet, and twenty of them, right. Okay, roll inside.
Speak up.
I've been asked, but is this a single-family home?
Yes, ma'am, it goes all around. It has the setback line.
Okay, will it be, okay, will the applicant be living here, or will it be rented out?
No, they'll, they'll be living here. They actually have another house that they just sold on the island, they'll be living here. Hold on.
Sixty percent, five say in favor?
I guess.
Any other questions?
Sixty percent.
Commissions? All right. Thank you. You available to answer any questions we have after the public come in?
Yes, sir.
All right. You, those in favor of, sorry, those opposed to this applicant, please come forward, state your name.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, let me pull this out, so I can put my papers down, and I will speak. I'm Julian Smith, I live on the island, and I remember this neighborhood as it used to be, as far as they still are. I want to start by saying I sympathize with you members of the board with this particular kind of application. Of all the boards, commissions, consulates, and other appointed or elected offices I served on in a small city on a tidal bay that was settled in the 1620s, the one I really disliked dealing with most was the Historic Preservation District, the historic district for a small part of the town, and that's where the big fight was. And some of those meetings went on from month after month because the board could not come to a decision. You guys can come to a decision pretty quickly, but perhaps tonight, you may decide to defer this until you have had more time and have more information. I would hope, though I doubt you will do this, I would hope that you would simply deny this application. Your Island Preservation District description says that the purpose of this section is to protect the historical and architectural character of the village area, and that's the start. This ordinance is not designed to protect the historical and architectural character. It protects no architecture. Buildings are torn down with permission of this board or others. The village area, except close to the ocean, was for the last fifty or so years typically small, modest cottages, weekend cottages, some year-round cottages, one or two bathrooms at most, one-story, maybe one and a half, and I believe there's a longtime resident who can speak to that, though he may want to support this application. This ordinance is not designed to protect the historical and architectural character, period. I challenge you to support that, and maybe that will give Mr. Higgins some bugging points. It's designed to regulate how buildings look, and that is really pathetic. It does not protect the historic character of the neighborhood. The building before you tonight, the application before you, the design does not look anything like the modest and one and, one and a half-story cottages you see all around that area, except for the new Mini-Mac mansions that are coming up. Now, this two-story building will sit on one of three lots on which there used to be one old house. Now there will be three, unless people decide to leave those vacant lots big, and I doubt that. Each of those three lots carved out of two sold for over $370,000 a few years ago, $370,000. So that's over a million dollars for this vacant land, and the people who buy this want to protect their investment. So what are they going to put up? A five, five bedrooms, each with a private bathroom, a separate sitting room that looks, sure looks like a sleeping room, it has doors that slide shut, and it has access to a half-bath, and also one of the bathrooms on the first floor is arranged so that the, anyone using the, can use that, yes, the party can use that bathroom if the half-bath is occupied. So this is basically a six-sleeping room, five-and-a-half-bathroom house. Oh, and there's a wonderful amenity, a separate parking area for the golf cart. Now, I don't know that the new owners... Now, I don't know that the, the new owners are not going to live there. Maybe their children, their grown children will come to visit with their children. But I suspect in time, this is going to go on the market as a rental property. It will become a party house, or it could become a party house. You're not preserving the character of the neighborhood by approving this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Do I need to?
You can stay right there.
Good, thank you. I'm Dr. Mary Abrams. And we live, we built a house almost 20 years ago now on the corner of Oak and Mayo. And the back end, which is really the side of the garage. I, I don't understand that. I have two or three questions too. Where would my house be?
Your house is at the bottom of the page.
The bottom of the page. That end?
Your garage is right next to the house on the bottom left-hand corner. Oak, Oak Street is where that dark, black area is on the left-hand side of the page is Oak Street.
Can you show where it is?
There's a tree.
Like on the zoning?
That you said was going to come down.
Is it right on the corner?
That's partially on my property. If I'm looking at that properly.
Is, is this your house on the right, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
That's me. That's the garage.
Okay.
And the front of the house is on, on Mayo.
Okay.
Which tree is it?
It, it doesn't show. It's to the right of the picture.
Can you put that up there, Stephanie?
The survey?
Comes into the garage.
That one?
This one?
There's no tree shown on that border.
Is it the, is it the small, about this big or small?
No, it's a big tree. Like this?
Is there a picture of her house over the left?
Would either be? Oak Street and a property. I wonder if it's this big one in the left?
It's in the far left.
Stephanie, put the one, put the one up to the right here. I'll submit this one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one she's talking about.
That's the one, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's on your property. We're not, we're not touching that.
Well, the way it's marked off
There's not trees on that.
From the survey. It looks as though we share that tree.
Put up the picture of her, the end of her house.
For how?
Do you don't plan to take that tree then?
No, I, I spoke to the, to the owners. And I said, I said, I put my arms around the tree. And I said, this is half mine. And I don't want, I don't want to take it down.
So, is it that one right here?
And he just said, always.
That's a picture of your house.
And the, and the garage, yes.
Where, where is the tree that you're talking about?
To the right.
To the right.
To the right.
Out on the street?
Those things that look like pillars are my screen porch. And they're not pillars. They're just posts to hold the screens. And the front of the garage doesn't show. That's the backside of the garage.
Is that, is that tree even noted on the site plan?
I think it's on the property.
On the property.
I believe it's this tree on the very far left. You can see on the, all those off the screen.
Yeah, we're not, we're not touching that tree.
Okay.
Okay.
That was one of my questions.
It's like it's in the right of way.
Yeah, it looks like it.
It very well may be. I haven't measured it off.
It's all right. The road splits there.
I really must agree with Mr. Smith as far as the design. In fact, I'm really surprised because when I talked to them several months ago now, perhaps even a year, when they rang my doorbell to introduce themselves and we had a really nice chat. And I thought, oh, these are going to be such good neighbors. And I still believe that. And I want to be a good neighbor, neighbor too. But they had told me that, well, it's really going to fit into the neighborhood. That's probably what we want if we do our house to fit in. I nearly fell off my chair when the front of the house came up on the screen. Because what we, when we built the house 20 years ago, did you see the one end of it there? That really was what we wanted to do. And I have had comments, I cannot tell you how many comments over the years of people who said, well, you must have fixed up an old house because it really looks like the neighborhood. And I said, no, we designed the house with the architect to look like and to fit in to the neighborhood. And I'm, I'm not ashamed to say, I think it really does fit into the neighborhood well. And I would be delighted to find out that they were going to be, what's their name? The McDermott's, the owners, were going to stay to that, what they told me in the first place, that they really wanted it to fit into the neighborhood. So, I do way with, agree with you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
About the design of the church. It may be modeling, but it doesn't fit.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I do have.
We've, you, we've given you some time. Take one more question, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm new at this.
I know, I know.
Forgive me, please. Actually, I think that that pretty much, I was curious about where the driveway were going to be. Can you show me where the driveway?
The other side of the house from you.
The other side of the house from me. And it's a seven-foot.
Step back, step back.
Steps, step back. Oh, that up there, I knew there was something more. What is that?
The black fence?
It looks like a fence.
Fence.
Yes, ma'am.
And where's that going to be?
Along, along the property line on, on your side.
That looks like it's about 20 feet tall.
It'd be just a six-foot privacy fence.
It says eight.
Or eight foot, eight foot, I'm sorry, yes.
That's a big fence. Can I question or can I say something about?
Just give you one more minute, how about that?
You are so generous. Thank you for putting up with my stammering, stuttering way of speaking about it all. An eight-foot fence is, is a lot of fence. And I'm not happy with that.
Well, I'm sure the owners might talk to you about that. I would think I would.
We didn't. Nothing was said about, about that when we had our conversation. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate your work and your time and your, I just appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to be appreciated, isn't it? It feels nice. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody want to speak in favor? All right. Public comment is closed. Commissioners? Any questions, comments?
Stephanie, one of the criteria in village preservation has to do with the, the building massing. And as I understand that, that's more of a volume calculation. It's height, width and depth. I think it gets to Mr. Smith's point. If, if the massing of, of a particular house is not consistent with what's around it, I mean, it meets the height criteria and so on, so on. It meets the setbacks. But I don't see anything here that talks about massing of this versus what's around it. Is that something that, that the applicant can speak to?
Yeah, absolutely. And we, you know, in some of the photos, you know, it shows what's in the surrounding area. So, you can, you can see the scale that you're comparing it to. And I know they, they did, let me see what sheet that is.
There's one, there's one.
Yeah, there's one sheet where they do.
Shows the height, but it doesn't really get into what massing is.
Okay. Yeah, it kind of shows how the, yeah, height and scale compares.
I think it's cubic, Michael. I mean, it, it says that, that the construction can't be inconsistent with exists, existing building massing, which is the three-dimensional bulk of building, height, width and depth.
So, page or sheet A41 is where they do show the approximate massing of adjacent property in comparison to this elevation. So, yeah, it's not, it's not a calculation of comparison, but it does show generally that, I mean, this, this is a little bit taller and maybe a fuller second story that a lot of homes in the area may, may not have a full second story. They're more, you know, one and a half story. But yeah, the applicant, I welcome to, to speak more to that, to how it does fit in more with the neighborhood.
And just the, the way that came about, just kind of the design process was the, my clients bought that particular parcel because of the park that will be a park and will always be a park. So, they wanted to take advantage of that with their views. So, that's why the sunroom is on the front, the master bedroom's on the front, all the glass is on the front, the two-story, you know, full two-story on the front. And then it drops back from there. But that's essentially to take advantage of, of the views of the park, which, which is why they bought the lot. So, that's kind of where that came from. And, and we tried to, you know, put the one-story porch on it, you know, knock down the roof of the main part, you know, as much as possible, still making a living, sitting room on that second floor, you know, to, to knock the scale down a little bit, but keep, but still keep those, those views. So, that's kind of where that came from.
Any other questions, comments?
Do we, sorry, Chair?
Please.
Yeah. Do we have a, a street view of other houses that, that we would compare to? I mean.
Yeah, I, yeah, I did not take a view, you know, further along Oak Street.
You can see the other one on Mayo.
But this, yeah.
My house is a story and a half.
And then, yeah, and this is, this will be across lot B. So, this is on, so that house is on Demery Way. But that's.
That's a brand new one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably on the substandard lot.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's another good point. There's probably quite a few that might be on substandard lots and are limited to a story and a half. And this, this is over 6,000 square feet. So, they can do a full two stories.
You know, the style of, of, the style strikes me as coastal. It fits in relative to the textures and the finishes. But it does seem like a massive, relative to other structures made, kind of sticks out as pretty big. But it's well within the ordinance. Is that, so you have skirting there. Is that, is this in the X zone or?
It is not. They, they're just very anxious not to get flooded. So, they want to build up anyway.
So, it is in the X zone. This is X zone. But they're, they're choosing to raise it up.
Yes, sir.
So, it would be very similar to the same height as Dr. Abrams' house without the skirt.
I was just, would, would the owners consider building on grade?
They were pretty adamant about building it up and have no, no chance for flooding because they've been flooded before.
Well, were they in the X zone?
They were not in X zone.
Okay.
I mean, I, I could see, but they, that was from the beginning. They were, you know, that's kind of where that came from.
I think there's a lot of sensitivity for people since Matthew and Irma. But, I mean, if you're in the X zone, I mean, it's about as safe as you can get.
Of course, that's exactly what I told them.
All right, what is the elevation? What is the elevation? Is it 14?
It was 18, honey.
18?
Yes, ma'am.
Because our house is 18.
I think that's plenty. A lot of people would die for 18, but. I'm just looking for possible compromises here. I think lowering it is, that'd make a big difference. I tend to agree. We don't have a fence ordinance, but eight feet is quite tall. But if you're starting four feet up, maybe, and you build on grade instead, well, you don't need an eight-foot fence. Maybe six-foot is reasonable.
I don't, I don't think they would, I think they'd be perfectly fine with going to a six-foot fence. I mean, you know, that's.
Well, quite honestly, when you look at that side of the house, there's only three windows on that whole side of the house anyway, man.
Right.
And, and those three windows, two of them are above eight foot anyway. So, I'm not sure what the private, what they're trying to keep private.
Yeah.
Is the fence all the way around the house?
Just down that side.
Just on one side.
Well, can we have, allow him to call his owners? Is that allowed? Should I be referring?
The owner's not here, huh?
Are they here? They, I believe they're in town.
So, this is, this is less than 35, the peak of that roof.
31.
31 with, with the.
32 from grade.
With the raised first floor.
And it doesn't, doesn't show, show it. But my house sits there. It has dormer windows. It, it's not a whole front face.
Yeah, I, I, because I want to, I want to get an answer on this impervious. I, it looks to me like the whole lot's covered.
Well, any other discussion?
I just, I just don't, I mean, I agree that I don't feel like it follows the intent of the district or village residential.
Well, without seeing more photographs, it's hard to make that determination. Maybe, maybe we can do more discovery on that.
I'll make a motion that we defer this application to our March meeting.
I think it might help the applicant if you can add to that motion what exactly you want them to answer. Do you want to lower it to the grade? Do you want to lower the fence? Do, you know, just particulars that they can, they can go back to and talk to the owners. So, they'll know what it is that we're looking for. So, can you?
Well, I'll, I'll try. I mean, for me personally, there's two things. One, one, all stemming out of what Mr. Smith and, and Dr. Abrams said. The, the size, the bulk of this. So, I'd, I'd like to see some better understanding of the bulk of this versus the surrounding houses. To Commissioner Duncan's point, get some photographs and let's do some calculations on, on the, the mass of this versus the surrounding properties. I want to, I want to understand the site coverage. And whether it's, whether we agree with it or not, site coverage is defined to include impervious and pervious. And so, I appreciate the fact that the driveway's impervious, but site coverage is supposed to be 50% or, or, or less. And this just doesn't look like it meets that to me. The privacy fence and, and lowering the height were things that I think we should be asking the applicant to consider as ways to deal with the massing. But the, the site coverage issue, neither one of us is going to solve that. To me, that's a separate issue. I'd like them to progress.
All right. Commissioner Rags, I want to ask you to get the secretary after the meeting and make sure she gets this down.
Okay.
And that will help you. All right. Will we, okay with that explanation on the motion and second?
Yeah, I mean, technically, it's not part of the motion. I don't know that it needs to be. Each one of y'all could have different reasons why you want it deferred. So, you know...
Well, I think, Letty, if you have an idea of what we're asking for to come back if we defer this.
I'm a little cloudy on the massing of it. Do you mean...
Volume counts.
Cubic feet or what?
Cubic feet would be good. That's the way massing's defined.
But then you want cubic feet of his neighboring properties as well?
Yes, for comparison purposes.
I'm not sure how to do that.
I know it. Since you're going to survey everyone's house?
I can take photos of the neighboring properties. I mean, that, because the front is what we're concerned about, right?
It's not just the front. I mean, if you look at it in an aerial view, it's a huge house.
Yeah, but we can't go survey every house.
No, but we do have to stay with the intent of the district. And it says unwarranted encroachment of high-density residential, commercial, industrial, or other uses. So, I mean, yeah, walk around the neighborhood and look. You can eyeball it. I mean, to me, this does not fit.
Well, there's other houses down in that area that are larger. Dr. Abrams' house.
How many bedrooms do you have in your house?
Four.
Four.
So, you know, it's...
Not too far off.
I think we just need to give the applicant some direction if we defer this.
Stephanie, is site cover just fifty percent on village residential or village?
Right, that is in village residential. And I know, I think the question was whether if it was a pervious surface, whether that counted. And I think that was still a question.
Kind of add to the neighborhood fit. When we're looking at East Beach, staff kind of color codes substandard lots versus standard lots. And maybe we can get a bird's eye view of that here?
Yeah, we can ask our GIS to put together a map of this surrounding area of what are substandard versus over six houses square.
I think it's unfair. If they have a standard lot, if we find ourselves comparing to substandard structures, substandard lots with structures, that's not apples to apples. And I understand we want to maintain the village, and I appreciate that. But I think we just need more data.
Which is the problem. We don't have all the information we need.
All right, any other discussion? entertain a motion?
Motion on the floor.
All in favor of the motion to defer to the March, what's that date?
Eighteenth.
March seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
March seventeenth, two twenty twenty. Raise your right hand. All opposed? All right. Sorry, Mr. Higgins, I think, come back with more information. We'll deal with it next morning. Have any questions after the meeting? If you'll come up and talk. All right. entertain a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Now that one's too bad.
You can pick any one of us for that motion.
Duncan and Torres.